So I think just as an overview again, we have meetings scheduled over the next few weeks to go through budget. We had one correction in the newspaper. It was posted that October 14th is going to be a meeting and that one we had tossed off that morning meeting. So the paper will issue a correction. But we'll make sure on the town's website that we do have the budget work sessions scheduled so people can check when it's needed. What I thought we'd do today is just sort of generally, oh, and also we have three hours for these, for the work sessions, but we don't always go that length of time depending on like today when I go a little shorter just because I know some people haven't had lunch because we had meetings run long and into each other all morning long. So, so people know that like we'll try and in the future help them start on time. We have backups today. We'll start them on time, but we may end them earlier. Today I thought we would go through just an overview of all the different sections of the budget and then Amber has already sent out to all of the departments the budget schedules sort of and to advocate for cuts that have been made. They can do so, but we also what I'd like to do today is if you have, you know, departments you definitely want to have come in, then let's check those off today and so that Amber can then reach back out and say, even if you weren't thinking of coming in, you now are asked to come in by the town board. So, starting off, you've got your budget workbooks. One thing I wanted to pop out was to Jan's question the other day about when the budget is adopted and when we have the public hearing. And so looking back at the New York State Office of the State Comptroller's Law, the public hearing is to be held on or before the Thursday immediately following the general election. So if we want to try and do that, hold it earlier, we just have to be able to step through the notification requirements because we do have to put them into the newspaper and the website and things like that. So if that's the desire of this board, and I don't propose we make a decision on that today because we've got weeks to go before we get through this. When we're close to the end, we can make that decision. But I just wanted to put that out there as a possibility. Just if you look at the cover sheet, I know that that's always confusing. And actually, are you logged in Shelby to a meeting? Because I'm wondering maybe sometimes you could do screen shares or I could do that. My preference would be to have you do that while you're logging in. So, you know, this, what I call the cover sheet for the budget. So it is page four of 71. So you'll see that there's five lines at the top under funds, the general fund A, general B, highway DA, highway DB, and debt service. We don't have any debt service, so that line is blank. But the A fund is everything that the entire town, including the village of Dering Harbor. Those are expenditures and revenues that apply to the entire town. The B fund are things that is the town minus anyone who lives in the village of Dering Harbor. So we don't have any say over the village of Dering Harbor's zoning. So they don't pay for our zoning department. They don't pay for our building department because they take that themselves. So anything that you see when we go through the B fund, that's something that the village of Dering Harbor isn't. So what happens on the tax bill is if you live in the center of the island or Ram Island, you'll be subject to general A fund taxes. If you live in Dering Harbor, you'll be subject to general B fund taxes. And then the same with highway. Highway is always broken in the state of New York. It's always broken out as a separate fund. DA is highway activities that are related to the entire town. And then the DB fund excludes things that the village of Dering Harbor does not have to pay for. So I just wanted to lay that out there just because I think that always causes confusion to the public. The total appropriations before we start this process, so tentatively, is seventeen and a half million dollars. So seventeen, five hundred thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. We have revenues that we received to come from various fees, et cetera, three million, three million seven, basically. We also then subtract out any transfers from fund balance or other funds. And so we've got seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in there, of which we've got the four hundred and five thousand dollars just sort of general fund balance pull. There's also five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of other pulls. So the cell tower, when we first bought the cell tower, we were getting a revenue stream each year. Sixty-seven thousand was going towards the operating receipts and sixty-seven thousand was going into the capital fund. So we had earmarked those funds. And when we get towards the end and start to discuss uses of fund balance, after we've gone through all the expenditures and other receipts, we'll go back to looking in more detail at the fund balance pulls. But you'll see that that's sort of a steady one. I think originally it was going to be nineteen years. I think we're in year ten, maybe nine or ten. I have to go back and double check. But in a number of years, that will end up going away. And so that in that year, it will be a little bit of a budget hit. Right now, it would be approximately a half a percentage of a hit, but down the road, it will be a lesser percentage. And it was sort of styled that way just so that we didn't reduce taxes all in one year because we had that money and then have a big hit the next year. It's just to kind of smooth the tax increases over years. And then you'll see the green options, the waterman program. Those are funds that came in via grants that we didn't end up expending all the funds in those years. So those, they go into the budget, but then when they don't get spent, then we roll them over to the next year. So they're sitting in fund balances available for us to pull to next year fund some more of the sailing program, waterman activities.
That one started at twenty-five?
It started at twenty-five thousand. Yeah. And I have it, I've put in seventeen thousand two hundred. I just have to double check once all the bills are in to make sure that that's the exact rollover. So we'll adjust that once we we have those seven clues the month of September. The B fund also has its own little set of pulls. So once we get through pulling those different funds, and then we also have capital reserve where some of the expenditures in equipment purchases in prior years, this year we have sixty-one thousand eight oh two on that. So the total amount that's going to be raised from taxes this year is thirteen million, twenty-six thousand, nine fifty-three. That figure last year was twelve million, seven forty-nine, basically. So I just want to, like, that's a cover page. That's where we keep going to when we look at things. So as we start to make adjustments to this budget as we go through the next few weeks, we're starting at two point two percent. And that number correlates with, you know, against, we can look at last year with seven point eight percent and six point three percent the year before. So you can see all of the years of previous budget increases for tax revenues to be raised. To go generally over some of the broad assumptions, one of the things that I put in for assumptions this year is, and I think I mentioned it on Tuesday, for personnel costs, which is by far our biggest, our biggest cost, is personnel and also employee costs, payroll taxes, retirement, health insurance benefits, I think that's everything, workers' comp insurance. This year, just salary costs alone of seven million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. I'm just going to round, which accounts for forty-two percent of the budget. The employee benefit costs are five million, seventy-three thousand dollars, which accounts for twenty-nine percent of the budget. So those two costs, forty-four, I forgot to add that. I can't do math in my head today. Seventy-three percent is related to those types of costs. So it's a big number and a lot of times people say it's not discretionary. It is discretionary if we want to start cutting positions, cutting programs, cutting services. So as you, you know, in your mind, go down any of those paths, just think about that's how we have to analyze the cost benefit of that. I had mentioned that the percentage increases, when I calculated this last month, the CPI was two point five percent. I think it's up to two point seven percent currently. We'll take a look and see if how it goes over the next month or so. I put in zero salary increases for anyone who was elected. The police percentage that was negotiated a couple of years ago was two point four percent. So we're actually doing pretty good there because with two point five percent, we negotiated a good contract rate. Highway was negotiated at three percent. So those, those two are set and cannot be changed. The only one that could be changed is the two and a half percent and zero percent for electors. Trying to think of some other bigger highlights. I went through, and you can see I've got my, my big budget book here, which I went through and got information from the department heads as they were coming in to talk to me and put that into the book. And I also went through the general ledger and periodically was printing out information on the 2025 expenditures and the 2024 expenditures, just to sort of see trends, to see where, where there were blips in something, in what, a purchase that was made last year that is not going to recur this year. I did the same thing, looking at receipts and seeing, okay, where are we year to date and extrapolating best I could where I thought we were going to end 2025 for expenditures. And then also looked at where we ended for 2024. And one of the things last year, which is one of the bigger increases in the receipt side is mortgage tax. So last year, we had taken mortgage tax to, let me just flip a different spreadsheet here.
We took a hit last year on mortgage tax.
Yes.
Now that, well, we took a good one.
Yes, but as it turned out. I think too many spreadsheets still open. So last year for mortgage tax, we took it, we, we took it way down. Highlighting this one in particular, just because it is a big number and it does have a bigger budget impact. So in 2023, our mortgage tax came in at five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. We had adopted last year in the twenty, in the 2024 budget, I should say, three hundred and fifteen thousand. When we were looking at budget season, we had not gotten that much in mortgage tax through the first quarter, maybe the second quarter at that point. So we budgeted a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for mortgage tax for 2025. We've already received in for one quarter alone, a hundred and one thousand dollars. And last year, we had adopted three hundred and fifteen thousand. We were expecting that to be down, you know, markedly low. It came in at the, by the end of the year at three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So in this year's budget, I have taken it up to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, given sort of like smoothing the numbers, extrapolating a hundred and one thousand so far this year compared to last year. So that is helping the budget. It's like up to receipts on that one, a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
So where did you land that?
It's on page. I mean, we'll get to those pages. Yeah, we can get to those. I just wanted to highlight bigger increases. One of the things that I want to, like, there are a few things I'd like to go back and take a closer look at, but goat hill maintenance, like, there was a lot of money that went, that was budgeted to go in and then we were over budget there. So we're bringing that down because there should be nothing left to, you know, just a few small maintenance items that be this year. So that, that number came, that expenditure line came down. So that helped like bring the percentage down half a percent.
Isn't there the sixty-one thousand in highway DA? Was that the ramp?
No, that's different. Yeah. So we'll, we will get to that. That is in, it's in the A fund because it's in public works.
Could you, maybe, maybe we'll get to this, but maybe shed a little more light on the fund balance transfers. I mean, because it's a significant amount of money that has brought down, I guess, the number. I mean, where did that money come from or were we?
Okay. Well, so one of it is that last year, we were anticipating a hundred and eighty thousand or whatever I had just said on the.
Mortgage tax.
Mortgage tax. So because 2024 closed out a hundred and eighty thousand dollars higher, that created fund balance. So that's available for us to pull and put towards that four hundred and five thousand. And we have some other areas like that, too.
Okay.
But I feel like that's always a better question to ask at the end of the, the whole budget talks, because then we, we've got our expenditures settled down where we, the town board wants some, the revenues settle down and then it's, okay, this is where we are. Do we want to make some tweaks? Do we want to pull less fund balance? Do we want to pull more fund balance?
Consider it asked later.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, we will definitely get to that. Yeah. Some other bigger areas. One of the things that we had in both expenditures and receipts was community housing, estimating that five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of funds would come in on that extra half percent. I didn't put it in this year because it's, it doesn't have any impact on the budget. It just, it's an in and an out, and so it just doesn't make sense to include it. So I took it out of both sides. So its net on the bottom is a zero impact.
Community housing being a separate schedule?
That's, that's what I'm, we're doing with it. I mean, in our accounting system, we have it in a separate schedule and in the financial statements. They pulled it out.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, it's out of here. We do have some, a few expenditures that have typically been funded by taxpayer revenues. So that there's the clerk for the committee, there's some consulting, some legal, some office and miscellaneous expenses. That's a discussion that we can have, that do we want to not fund, since we have the half a percent, do we want to fund all of the community housing board activities out of that revenue stream instead of, out of taxpayer dollars? So when we get to that page, we can talk about the merits of that. One thing that I have Ken Lewis investigating further, because when I started to review landfill brush in, we were down a lot this year so far. And the fall is a more active time for brush being in, but I looked at what had we received so far in 2025 versus what percentage of the revenues for 2024 had we received in and extrapolated from there. So I took that receipt number down a hundred thousand. Ken's going to do a little bit more digging. You know, we have, you know, will we have any storms in the fall? And I mentioned that to you the other day and you had a thought.
Yeah, the longer that.
Oh, yeah.
Because you're not allowed to clear until November 1st. So that could be something that adds to why this is so low right now. There's no guarantee. Hey, November 1st, they'll start to pick up.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but we won't, we won't be able to fill that into this year's budget. Trying to think of other like broad strokes and highlights for you. As far as new hires within the budget this year, we did hire a new police officer last month. And, but because of the retirement of a police officer last year, the, the police salaries were pretty stable as a result of bringing that person in, in its anticipation of a potential retirement next year. And that will also, will be taking off a higher salary person and putting in this lower salary person that we just hired if we're going to keep the police department labor force where it is. So right now, we're up a little bit, but that will only be for a period months long.
The pensions are paid by the county, the state?
The pensions are paid by us and we get that number from the state. And as luck would have it, I give you the budget books on Tuesday. And the state released their retirement 2027 projection on Wednesday. So I'm like, okay, well, I couldn't incorporate that. And I haven't had a chance. Barbara, to take a look at it, the cost from, it's not, it's a fiscal year, it's not a calendar year. So the fiscal year 2026 that is in the budget incorporated to fiscal 2027 increased by two hundred thousand dollars. But that will not, that should be about a fifty thousand dollar hit to the budget. So point four, point five percent. I want to just go through the analysis of it. And then Barbara also takes that information and she runs our salary schedule through it because the state gives us a projection based upon last year's salaries and what they anticipate CPI increases to be or whatever they put into it. She runs a more detailed calculation that takes our actual salaries and puts that in and extrapolates everything. So we'll see where she comes out. So it'll be another week or so before she's got that number because it is a laborious effort to put in everybody's salaries and get it in there. So that's, that's coming. I think that's it. I mean, there's more as we go through line by line. I think next what I'd like to do is before we start to like just go through, you know, line by line, is just to go page by page for a few minutes to just talk about who we want to have come in. So the first page you have has page five out of 71. We've got town board and that's ours, you know, your salary on a different page, as well as professional fees, association of towns and things like that. In looking at this, I got, and I did hand out last year the detail for professional services. At one point you said, oh, why didn't you show that with us? I'd forgotten. But Shelby was like, no, here it is. It's in the budget books. So anyway, so I presume that you will want that detailed schedule.
Yes, absolutely.
On association of towns, I have like cut everywhere, like much, many fewer people are going to go to association of towns next year just because this was my year to like go lean. And just to reiterate again, the reason I want to go lean this year is because of the revaluation doesn't give us an opportunity to spend more money. The tax rate will go down. So if, if the pie of, you know, the total, you know, island was five hundred thousand and it doubled to a million, it just means the tax rate got cut in half. It's just mathematically, that's how it works. The concern that I have is that the tax burden shifted from the waterfront properties and water view properties to the center of the island. So someone on Ram Island may have only seen their tax assessment not, and I'm using broad numbers. I'm not using the actual numbers just for illustrative purposes. So somewhat, so if the whole island, your tax assessment doubled, just in general for the whole pie, people on Ram Island say their tax assessment only went up fifty percent. So a four million, a six million dollar property only went up to like eight million dollars or something like that. Whereas an inland property that was assessed at five hundred thousand went up to a million dollars. So while it doesn't correlate to exactly, you know, a doubling of their taxes, you might have had somebody on Ram Island go from thirty, a forty-two thousand dollar tax bill to a thirty-eight thousand dollar tax bill. You've got somebody on Thomas Street whose tax bill went from twenty-nine hundred to thirty-eight hundred dollars. And so while nine hundred dollars may not seem like a lot to some people, to some of those families, it is a lot that they need to cover in this coming year, in addition to all of the other costs, right? You know, insurance, things like that. So I felt it was important for us to, people saw when they got their letters, you all got yours, that showed, you know, like, if nothing changed from last year's budget, your tax bill was forty-two thousand, your tax bill is going to be thirty-eight thousand. So I wanted to try and keep at least our portion of the budget as flat as possible so that that additional bump up for next year would not hurt as much. I have been, the treasurer for the fire district, the fire commissioners, I think, are committed to keeping, not piercing the tax cap for their budget. The school did not pierce their tax cap. I'm not sure what the library did. There is going to be the library debt rolling on, so that will be an additional cost for people. So there will be a bigger jump up there. So that, that's my whole purpose in trying to make this as lean a year. Next year, you know, that always comes back to bite us when we have to like restore some of the things, like no more new programs. Don't buy that extra piece of equipment. Don't like, don't send as many people to association of towns. So next year, it makes it just a little bit harder to keep going with, you know, some things, like restoring things back to prior years. But I just toss that out there. So getting back to page by page, we have, so I'll get you the professional services. I'll get you a list of.
What page are you on there?
Page five of 71. Throughout the entire organization, I have on the list, we're going to association of towns. And I would have pulled some of that today, but this morning's meeting went longer than expected. For justice court, we have, you know, flat salaries.
Some of the professional services, I'm sorry, what do they make, what, what consists in that, your?
Second.
Is it included?
It's not legal. It's got a whole host. So let me just pull it up because I'm starting to list it. Here we go. We have our contract accountants who come in and supplement what Shelby does. We have labor counsel in there. We have our grant writer. On a smaller scale, we've got town code updates. We've got GASB 75 compliance. We have anything that's seeker related, it's sort of like general knowledge that the town board requests PW Broster to weigh in on something.
Teresa, is it?
Nope, she's in a different category. We have Perillo Hill, which is our outside legal counsel for litigation. We have.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. So it's all, it's all of that.
That you, you'll, you'll have that.
I'm, I'm looking at, I just didn't get an opportunity to point it out today.
Another thing we, I think we briefly talked about last year was a lot of employees wear different hats and their salaries broken up over.
Yes.
And we're talking about some way to string that together, maybe with a footnote or like, not the, Christina, but she's right here on the first page.
I have a spreadsheet.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet. I can distribute that. I just need to check like two other people because I think when I was designing the spreadsheet, I, something didn't look right. I don't think I pulled in like, so yeah, salary for Jessica or something like that.
Okay, great.
But what it does, it also breaks down for everyone, the hourly rate, because you've got thirty hour per week employees, you've got thirty-five per hour week employees and forty hour per week employees. And so sometimes when looking at salaries, it's kind of hard to say like, oh, well, how come, you know, pick on Judy for a minute, you know, she's a thirty hour per week employee. You know, it looks like she's making, you know, she's making this, but then when you look at her hourly rate compared to other administrative clerks in the same line, it starts to make more sense. It also starts to make sense because there's two instances, two instances where we had a, the nutrition program manager, she was making less per hour than the head chef who was below her. And so last year, I noticed it, but it was just not, you know, things were settling down as far as structure over there. So that was a salary that I wanted to take up a little bit because it didn't make sense that that role is making less than the role underneath her. And then the same with the head chef, the differential between the head chef and the head cook and the cook was not, did not recognize the difference in responsibilities. So that was another salary line that I took up more than two and a half percent. So those are the only two. But you'll be able to see that in this spreadsheet.
And actually, you're not in this.
No, I'm in a different section. I'm in the supervisor's section. So yeah, the four town board members are on page five. So when we look at justice court, we have the salaries for the judges, we have the two clerks that work there. And then they've got travel, interpreter contracts, office and miscellaneous, association of towns, and stenographer. So their, their budget is rather small and their total non-salary components is thirty-two thousand dollars. Do you want anyone to come over from them to come in and explain their budget or even just go through what happens over at justice court?
Think so. I mean, I love an explanation about what goes on at justice court, but I don't think we need to do it here.
Okay, yeah, I was just saying, it's up to the four of you because I have to just know everybody, so.
Just hold Stanley aside.
About Edward Gordon?
Okay.
Does anybody want to come in? Or you?
Going to come in.
Who?
Reed is going to come in September 29.
He's the only person that's.
I mean, just thinking with justice court, there's been a lot of change over there lately. Do they want to come explain it or?
He requested 10 to 11. Reed requested 10 to 11 on September 21. See people writing.
Oh, that's Reed.
Yeah.
No, because it was really just a swap out of a clerk. I mean, that's really the only change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm fine.
Yeah, one, one move to a different municipality and we hired somebody else. So it was a little bit of a gap, a part-time gap, but as of Monday, yeah, it was Monday. Elizabeth Larson started.
Wasn't this going to change?
Apparently they're excited.
Yeah, like the part-time clerk, I mean, if, if we don't have that particular part-time clerk, then we will hire because that position is needed, especially on court dates. But yeah, so we have staffed like a normal staffing bubble for that. Yes.
I mean, the clerk overtime happens because we're still a little shorthanded?
It's just in case there's an arraignment on the weekend or at night. And on less complicated ones, they don't normally call in the clerk and just they finish the paperwork that needs to be done the next day or the next business day when they come in. But they do like to have just a little bit of overtime set aside in case something complicated or controversial or big happens and they do need the assistance. And you can see over the past.
Yeah, you cut it in half.
Yeah, I was going to say 2020. Or it didn't get utilized and it hasn't gotten utilized so far in 2025. Shelby, you sent out an Excel version of the budget. So there is a column for actual 2023. So if you want.
I think I unhit it before I sent it.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say.
Show up.
Yeah, I had it hidden when I sent it over to you.
You can see it.
So if you do want another year of actual numbers, it's there.
This modified budget is for 2026, this column?
No, it's 2025.
So it's current?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes, you have the adopted 2025, you've got the modified 2025, what's transpired through August 31st, 2025. When we get into October, after the books get closed for September, Shelby will update the spreadsheet, but you will not redistribute the, the paper copies, just so you know. But when we post the town board's budget for the public hearing, we'll make sure that the December, oh, the September 30th numbers are.
So that's justice court.
Yes. So turning the page, we've got on this one, the supervisor and human resources. The staff that are considered under the supervisors page are the senior account clerk, a part of the administrative assistant. That serves the supervisor, town board, also legal, and then some other committees. Also got administrative assistants who deals with retirement, health insurance, grants, a host of miscellaneous activities.
And just to be clear, so we're going to get another spreadsheet that'll tie in all the multiple rows and we can stick it in this book.
Yes. I don't, when you look at it, it's going to have the totals for the employees. If you look, if you look at the cell, if you look at the cell, you can trace back like, oh, okay, you know, it's made up of, you know, two different places for this. This employee has six lines feeding it, so you can see it in there to cross check, but it's not, it's not spread out in this spreadsheet, but shows exactly the same. If you, if you want, I'll let you prepare it out.
Thank you.
Then as far as the expenses go, we've got ADP, office and miscellaneous service contracts, and then school, travel and mileage. I'm not sure why it's called school, but travel and mileage. And then human resources, that would be Coco's department. Since she wears a few hats, again, only part of her salary is on this page. Turning the page. We have town board other items. So this is on page seven. We've got the audit. They are going to, the audit is 76, 700. I just have to double check that, Shelby. It's on my list of things to check because in the independent audit, we've got the big audit for the entire town. CPF audit goes onto a different line. And then we also have the justice court audit. And so I have to just make sure I'm adding up the pieces correctly for both. Yeah, it does get added in here. I just have to make sure I pulled in the right number. But if it's off, it's off by a thousand or 2,000.
But all the audit numbers are in here.
Not CPF.
Not CPF.
Because that gets paid for with a different revenue. Under tax receiver, we've got.
You notice it done also for community housing? Since that's in the CPF, we got WQIP, CPF.
No.
Is there any requirement there for community housing?
I do not believe so.
I haven't heard anything.
Because it's, it's incorporated. No, but it's, it's, it's actually.
Tax transfers.
The money comes in at the same time, but it's not under the same. It gets calculated when someone closes, but it's not part of the CPF legislation, I believe, in the same way that WQI money is.
I thought we had talked about taking it out of the general fund as a separate schedule, right?
Correct.
So in the, under the separate schedule, who would do the auditing of that?
Right now, there is not a separate audit for the community housing board.
It's part of the whole town.
Exactly, yes. Yeah.
I think it's something to take a look at because I, I, I don't, since it is in the CPF legislation, it might be very well in there.
When the auditors came in this year, they did not, because we do do the audit for CPF. It is a separate auditing firm. They did not expand their scope to include it. And if it was, if it was required, they would have told us. Let me just add that to the good list. Tax receiver, since she's elected, zero increase there is.
There another role she plays?
No.
No. Oh, getting back, did you want human resources to come in?
Uh, not, not right now. I thought that's what we're doing, going through this.
Well, you know, but just asking if the, if we want to have department heads come in. Yes, so would you like her to come in and just go over what?
If you want people to come in, I reached out since I've scheduled them.
Okay. All right, so.
Just sort of go over what.
So we don't, I thought, we're going to go through this first or you want to give, give names now?
Well, no, what, um, yeah, I figured as we go page by page, if you want a department to come in, let's highlight it now. Yeah, so that way they have time to get on the calendar. So that's a yes. So do we want Coco to come in?
No, no.
Okay. Tax receiver, do we want Amber to come in? I mean.
Just based on these numbers, huh?
Yeah, and I was gonna say, and they may want to, especially in places where they propose.
For a higher salary?
Yeah, they propose something and I've cut it, so yeah.
I, no for tax receiver for me.
Okay, anybody else? Assessors. The one change there that's underway with interviews is just we had the part-time deputy assessor and we're taking that up to full-time, which is what it always used to be. And then when Pat Castaldi was the deputy assessor, she went to part-time. And we, we didn't want to replace her as we were going through the revow as well as her years of experience. We did not want to lose that at such a critical juncture. But we are taking it back to a full-time position. I think it's needed. I don't know if you want to have Judith come in to talk about that?
Sure we have.
Yes, I was gonna say. All right, so that's a no for her. Assessment board review, it is what it is. I took it up a little bit just because with the revow, they did see a lot more grievances this year. And don't know if that will continue next year, but they, they were down over the past four or five years with grievances because assessments weren't changing. We just kept the assessments the same every year. So now that people will see their assessments changing on a year-to-year basis.
Well, didn't we get an assessor fee increase this year and people coming in?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yes, yeah, so that's. Yes, so that's why I took that number off. But I just wanted to explain why that's a little bit higher than the norm.
Share it. What is this money for? It's a couple hundred bucks. What's the point?
It's their salary.
It's their salary. So they put in like, there's an hourly rate, they put in the number of hours that they worked.
So like $470? Kind of reading this, right?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
For all the headache, that's what they get paid, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, you got it. Yeah, it's basically a volunteer position.
Yeah.
For all of them.
With lunch money.
Yeah, the work that they do and the headaches that they endure. Town clerk. Do we want Amber to come in and talk to us?
Any questions?
Hey, Amber.
She's elected?
Yeah, elected, so no salary.
The two deputies are not elected, correct?
Correct, so they got the two and a half percent increase, but overall, that budget is down $5,000. Mainly due to my cuts. So she may want to come in and advocate.
Okay.
Under the town attorney section on page eight, you will see that the.
Going back to the town clerk, the digitization, wasn't there some issue relative to having printers or something?
There's laser fish and it went to IT, that's under IT's budget going forward. And then I had in the budget for this year for a scanner. Kevin relayed to me that there's a scanner upstairs and I'm going to see if it will work for what I need before I move forward on purchasing that scanner.
You don't have a scanner?
And a proper one to scan, digitize all the documents now.
A large format.
Large format scanner.
Yeah, so she has a scanner.
I was gonna say, how do you scan things now?
Now I have my little desktop scanner.
So you have no other scanner? I guess you need them in your office, right?
We need a large format for, you know, larger plans and.
I have full-size construction plans, which that printer upstairs is not going to do, but eventually the building department will have one, I think.
Yes.
So I guess she, I was looking here under equipment, you had, you had a, that must've been for a scanner last year? Is that what that $1,000 is?
Is my backup in case something breaks, in case something, you know, you need to order something else. For instance, I'm going to have a little scanner, it's like $300, the table front one for books, so you don't have to take it apart.
Right.
That's $300.
New scanner.
I know. Really good colored printer too, but they're expensive, so you may do.
You can have a new scanner as long as you promise not to send me any of these big documents.
Send your paper copies. And take the. Okay, so getting down to attorney, because that's, we've got some big moves in there. So the town attorney salary has been zeroed out and I have created a new line called outside legal counsel. And so the agreement that we have through the end of the year with Will and Filer is, Filer is a monthly, based on the rate of the salary town attorney that we had budgeted. And they are going to continue that salary with, you know, just the two and a half percent increase as we continue to work out logistics about how this whole relationship's going to work, how much time is going to be required, et cetera.
Just back up to January for a second. With the departure of Mr. Kylie and then having interim attorney, there, isn't there a gap, as in, do we save some money?
No, we did not. I have a spreadsheet. But what, yeah, I've been tracking budget overages and I've been pulling money. So what you'll see, if you look at the town attorney line, the modified budget, so the 2025 adopted budget was 155,600. The modified budget right now is 77,800. On Monday, that remaining 77,800 got transferred down to outside legal counsel. So if you see.
Through 831?
Yeah, well, actually, no, it's not reflected yet, I'm sorry, because it had, I, this was as of August 31st. But that money will then completely zero out, the modified budget will end up being zero.
So we have a lot, this is town attorney. We have a, a, a separate lines for our outside attorneys?
No.
No, because you have it under professional services. We have multiple attorneys from planning and so forth.
The planning, it goes into the B fund, zoning goes into the B fund. Professional services has its own line. Community housing board and their own budget. So just Will and Filer will be, is going to now get moved down to here. So then we've got in professional fees, services will still have labor, outside labor counsel and litigation counsel. And we can. Perillo Hill. Yeah, and anyone else, you know, periodically, like we've had tax searchery services for the assessors. So that was in that line too. The, the thing with making up multiple lines to track the various attorneys and professional fees is if you have a line for like, how many did I say before? There were like seven different people. If you budget for each one of those and then you like, okay, we're spending more money on, you know, this council, but not this council, then you're starting to do budget transfers and trying to monitor it throughout the year. It's always better to do a higher level of budgeting, but then we can always pull out the information and track it independently. But like you see the budget transfers we do during the course of the year, especially at the year end or in the early part of the year when we're cleaning up the prior year. We have pages of budget transfers because quite frankly, like looking at the attorney outside, like office and miscellaneous training conferences, it would be nice to just lump those into one category so that we don't have to do budget transfers, which frequently happen amongst these old categories, especially when you get to like public works where we have a history of breaking out lines of, you know, minutia, so.
Makes sense.
Like, so that's, that's the reason. I mean, if this board decides you want to break it out that way, then I would not recommend it.
Well, it's not a question of breaking it out or like you have professional services, okay, which attorneys are in? But we really could have a line item for legal fees.
Yeah.
In some format or another, okay?
Yeah, so we'd be pulling that out, but then what do you want to do with like the grant writer? She's in.
Well, she's an attorney.
I know, but you've, you've just created, but you've just created two, you know, two lines, so I'm just.
It's just that all, the question's always asked, you know, what, what are, what are your attorney fees? Okay, like what, what's going on? So just think it's a good idea to have our attorneys, our outside legal fees in a different column, okay?
You can figure it out. It is something that everybody asks about, so we'll figure it out. It is something that everybody asks about, so we'll figure it out.
So for something like, for example, we have Steve Levinball come into a meeting, and we still have our new town attorney there. Would he be in the professional services line on this? And I'm just using Steve because he's one that we still pull in for things, even though--
Yeah, I would put him down in here. Like, so we have, in effect, pulled out some legal fees, and it will now be on this line, the 1420.400. So maybe it does accomplish more of what you're thinking. Although I kind of like having Thomas down in here, but keep labor and--
Like HR, as an example. Shouldn't the HR attorney be into the HR area?
Yeah, but, I mean, we get back to, it gets back to the budget transfers again. Because we budget what we think it's gonna come, labor council's going to be, because we have the retainer portion, and then we have outside of the scope of that. So, you know, one year, we don't have as much litigation, but then we have more labor things going on. So then it's just budget transfers. And so it's your monitoring it through the course of the year to see where you have it. It just-- It's up to this board. You just sometimes feel like more lines is, yeah, like, creates more--
If you look at other town budgets, it's usually just like 0.1, 0.2, 0.4, and everything.
Everything.
Yes.
You get a little crazy. Because we're small, and we can be.
Yeah, we're bigger.
Yes, yeah, but when it comes to the staffing, then it falls to the accounting clerk to--
Sort it all out.
Sort it all out, and the supervisor. Okay, so that's attorney. So page nine out of 71. We have Joe Finora.
When does the longevity kick in, after five years?
Five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. So do you want Joe to come in and talk about what's going on in his department?
I think that would be a good idea. No, he's got, okay, he's got professional services here also. So that's basically for engineering.
Yeah, anything that he feels that he, you know, it starts to get a little bit--
Out of scope.
Yeah, okay. Green options.
It's just clerk time.
Yeah, clerk time, and then office and miscellaneous. You see the 3250. Then if you go back to the cover sheet on page three, I think it was. I think it's the carryover of 3250.
Is it still 3250? I don't think so.
2748, yes. So 2748 is for programs under that grant. And then the rest is office and miscellaneous assets. A share of the clerk's paper, paper, you know, copies and printers and things. Public Works. Are you sure you want Ken to come in?
Yeah, I will want Ken to come in. Don't even have to look into details to know we want to talk to him.
Yes, yes, exactly.
So you have the professional services pulled out here separately also? I'm assuming correct?
Personal.
Personal, I'm sorry, it's personnel, beg your pardon.
Yes, yeah, that's always the 0.1 category. And for public works, landfill, highway, roads, brush, there is a supporting spreadsheet that shows all of the employees in the union and what categories they get broken out to and what the percentages are. For some employees--
The next page, but it's teeny, teeny, tiny, so--
All at once.
Micro. We send, or we can print out like a large copy.
Yeah, a larger one, yeah.
Do an 11 by 17 and then fold it.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I tried to blow it up.
It's got some magnified, but--
I tried.
And then even the ants can--
I'm sorry, it wasn't working with me to blow up either. So we'll just do the 11 by 17.
Yeah, rather than starting to get into the details of this, we'll just wait until Ken comes in and go line by line.
Do we have all this coming in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Today is just really the overview. After we go past the not-part-to-read page of level, we have IT and media, and that would be Kevin. Start turning the pages.
What is page nine? I can't read it.
That's the highway subtotal sheet.
Okay.
Page nine or page 11?
He's on page 11.
Page 11?
Yeah, page 11 is left, yeah.
You see the IT, yes, right?
Um, yes, and if you turn the page, because now that, when I'm looking at it, I've got, like, Shelby's incorporated some of the backup sheets for you for some of the committees, just because Kevin gives a very detailed listing of what's in his maintenance budget and also what's in his equipment budget. So you can take a look at that. We'll say yes to having him come in.
Where do you have him?
Not turn the page, it's page 13.
Yes, that's Kevin's backup. That's how he gets to his numbers.
Yeah. So I thought I heard somebody say, yes, you did want him to come in.
I did, yeah.
Okay. And so then he can go through and explain, you know, why, why we have these areas items here. And how he, you know, his rotation of computers, copiers, servers, and things like that. Town board, other items. We have unallocated insurance, which I did get something, I think Tuesday afternoon, while we were in the work session, from the insurance company with estimates on increases.
I haven't gone through it yet, but yeah.
Although I think the first number, the bigger number, I think it's like, like, 7%, and I'm pretty sure that's what I put in for my estimate, or my assumption. So we may be close, but I'll go through.
Yes, I'll my sheet from last year, because I--
What are the charges in these?
This is like townwide--
Townwide, okay.
All the insurance, yeah. Like property liability. It does not include workers' comp. I won't go through the big deal. I'll just start that so that we bring that in. Association of Towns, that's just seduce, and then contingent. We always put in some number for contingency. Historically, it's been $100,000, although back in 2024, you'll see it's listed at $225,000. The reason for that increase of $125,000 is we were in the process during budget season of negotiating both the lease and highway contracts. So we, we made an assumption about what we thought, where we thought the negotiations were going to land. But of course, we don't want to put it into the salary lines and tip our hand as to what was an acceptable negotiation. So it was lumped into there.
So there was no contingency this year?
There was $100,000.
You had it in the budget?
Yes.
But back in 2024, whatever was agreed upon was put in the respective sections.
Right, it moves-- Yeah, so--
Zero is--
Yeah, so what--
Not really zero, but it's--
Yeah, so it goes, you'll see, like, wherever there's a modified budget, that money came from someplace. So sometimes it might be within a department. Someone says, I'm not gonna spend all of my office and miscellaneous, but I was, my overtime was over. So then they move $1,000 from there. Other times, it's something that is, you know, one year we had a settlement with a property owner on something. So that came out of contingency.
So Amber, the $100,000 that was set up for contingency, which we modified the budget to $45,000, the balance, the $55,000 went someplace within this bracket here? Or it went within, when you're saying it applied, went into another fund?
It went into another line.
Did it go into multiple lines right above?
Or multiple lines?
It went into judgments and claims right above that $55,000.
I was gonna say, I was just about to go look for it, but you found it faster. Yeah, yeah, so.
So if you look at that, where it says contingency, it was originally $100,000, modified was $45,000. If you look right above, that $55,000 was judgment and claims. That came out of the contingency.
Judgment and claims.
Right.
That's legal?
Yes. I can be more specific later.
Okay. I think I got the picture.
My concern with a contingent in this year's budget of $100,000 is I have, like, cut people back to the bone in some categories. So do we want to put in a slightly bigger contingency? Because--
There may be overages that are unexpected.
Yeah, like, if we just run into issues where people are over, and we've got a year that, you know, I'm saying 2026 is gonna look like this, and it turns out 2026 ends up looking like 2024 or something like that. So we just, we might want to consider what we have in there. You know, a lot of people think that government has a lot of fat. We are a small town where there is not a lot of fat. Some of us accept there's multiple budget years, some only one year, some, you know,
Some years.
New year, but you do start to learn.
Yeah, that probably wouldn't be the worst idea.
Yeah, so just--
We'll think about it.
Yeah, just something to consider if we go through. But that would be like, at the very end, like, once everyone's had a chance to digest the budget.
So there's nothing proposed?
No, $100,000, yes, $100,000, which is sort of the same old, same old.
Okay.
It just makes me nervous. And what happens is if we run out of contingency, then we end up drawing from fund balance. But it's kind of, it's better to put the monitor here, because when we start to draw from fund balance, there's nowhere in the financial, the monthly financial statements that Shelby sends out that shows where this coming is. So you have to just pay attention to budget transfers.
Now, the fees from Justice Court, where, is that further on down?
Yeah, we go through expenditures first.
Okay.
Yeah. MTA, about zero? MTA, yeah, zero. What ended up happening is they changed the law in, earlier this year, and June 30th was the last, last time that municipality has to pay for MTA tax.
Excellent.
However, like, little--
Where's the sneaky trick?
We had an issue-- No, we have, no, we have an issue with ADP because I found it, because I still keep up with some accounting and tax things. And I said to Judy, oh, look, we don't have to pay this anymore. And she found that ADP was still taking it up. So we were fighting with them, because they're saying you have to file the amended tax returns. And we're saying, no, you have to file the amended tax returns. And we're also, like, not happy with, like, the fact that they didn't let us know. Like, they should be on top of it, so.
What are we paying for?
Exactly, exactly. But all in all, like, within the four different funds, it does structure the savings of $25,000. I liked that one. But I'm patting myself on the back on that one for catching it.
Good job. So we're gonna have Chief come in?
Yeah.
He's the next page after Kevin.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's kind of a summary. Oh, okay, oh, but here's the details on the page behind it, okay. All right, so, yeah. We should look at page 14. Page 15, I mean, 13 is the details for the ROLOs. And Shelby, did you send back out all the departments with with budget sheets?
Uh, no.
Okay, if you could do that, because I saw a sheet yesterday, and it was like, so what did you slash? I'm like, not a lot, but there are some changes. Is it on email?
Oh, okay.
Send it, budget. But he'll need, like, this page that I made amendments to that does show I do have a supervisor's column. And if you, yeah, it's on the one that you have, sister.
This is the single biggest, can't be, biggest piece of the budget, 3%, it's 15%.
Yeah, I think all of the highway, I mean, it's a big piece. Highway is also, highway, landfill, roads, brush.
Yeah, that's probably the bigger.
Yeah, I think that one is, is bigger. One of the things I do want to point out is in overtime, if you look at the line, you know, the adopted 2025, and then through, you know, through 831, and then the department proposed, what Chief didn't put in, and I did put in, is the overtime associated with the opioid grant. We have one police officer that we sent for a few weeks to the Easton Drug Task Force. And so the overtime that gets generated from there is paid for through the opioid grant. So rather than us, like, doing a budget modification later to up the overtime, I just thought, let's just put it in here, because we know it's going to happen. And the revenues are in the budget already.
That was a $60,000 difference?
Yes, 60, yeah, 60, yeah.
So this budget's going up $65,000?
Yeah, just look. The biggest piece is because I do that change. And I did that for transparency purposes.
I mean, you can ask, Chief wants to guess everywhere.
The budget with that change that I put in is going up 1.7%. So the total increase is about $45,000. So his budget, if he submitted, actually went down just slightly. And the reason being is we had a, you know, the new, new police officer in salaries, we took out the retired police officer salaries. So they start out low and have overtime.
The one adopted last year was 2.35.
Yeah, to, for police? To 2.7 million, basically? You're looking at the--
Oh, yeah, I'm just looking at the top bit, okay.
Oh, you're looking at just separate, yes, okay, yes.
Okay, whatever, I mean, you can talk about it whenever you can, but it's fine.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to make sure Shelby sends out the sheet so that he can analyze, see what changes I made, see if he agrees with them, or can accept them, or if he wants to advocate for any restoration.
What generates so much overtime? Is it just a scheduling question?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes, you know, it's scheduling, it's, you know, special events, like the fireworks and things like that. If we have, you know, like Reverend Launcora, like, that investigation a few years ago created, generated a lot of overtime because it was, you know, a big investigation. And while we did get some help from the county, it did take up, you know, our staff time. You know, sometimes, you know, Chief can look at it to see whether or not, you know, with the scheduling, I think we're at a good place. But if we were to put on two people on a night shift or something like that, then it might make more sense to hire somebody rather than paying overtime, time and a half, to hire another person. But then, I don't even want to go there this year. So Chief is a yes to come in. For jail, there's not much to say there, but he can speak to that.
We have one judge on there.
You do? You need to go see them.
Well-- I think they'll be self-volunteer.
Exactly, exactly. But it's good to see what it looks like down there. So we've got another subtotal sheet for the police. It's on page 16. Animal control also falls under--
Not part of the police department? Isn't she technically a police officer?
No, might be a peace officer, but I'm not even sure about that. But if there's any questions, you can-- Chief can speak to that.
But this also includes, like, deer and tick committee?
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, it is a mix of things. Because, yeah, I just looked at it, it was like, yeah, we got the clerk in there. So Bo helps with this budget as well.
And this budget went down by two grand-ish.
Yes, 1,875.
Ish.
Yes, yeah.
Basic round balance.
Four, two, one, that's it.
The NIMS, emergency management, that used to be a special program, but now that it's notify me as part of our website, is in there. We're not paying for code red.
Right.
And we haven't spent money on equipment, so I got rid of it. So if Chief needs to have it restored, he can come in and tell me. But I looked back a few years, didn't see anything. Health and wellness, small committee. I think one of their asks, asks, would be on the next page, with town social worker. And the changes you'll see there on the adopted versus what I'm proposing this year is we have an opioid grant. And originally, we thought that we would have more reimbursement on town social worker time. And we're just not able to, like, they're very specific about directly working with people who have addiction issues, are in recovery. So I've scaled back, scaled back for hours, because it just, presumably it's going to be paid out of the budget, and it just hasn't happened, so. That's why that's a decrease. The health and wellness committee may want to come in and advocate for more hours for the social worker, which is usually something that they do ask for each year.
So then you created a new line for the opioid grant below that?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. And that's just for the, the other programs. So when we originally envisioned how the opioid money was going to be used, it was going to be a police officer, um, about seventy thousand dollars for a police officer, um, salary and benefits costs that we're able to get reimbursed and thirty thousand for the social worker with a little bit of programming in there. We've moved, since we can't utilize it for the social worker, um, we've moved it into programming. And so there have been, um,
So that's what this.
In twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty four, we had like three programs that were, um, done over at the school, um, to the different ages of the school kids as well as a community session whenever any of these speakers came in. So that's what that is.
Want to do something?
A hundred thousand. And it's for three years. Um, we'll see what happens.
Hundred thousand a year?
Yeah, so we had last year, this year, and twenty twenty six is the third year. And we, I, I haven't heard anything. I know you've talked to at least a clerk at the, uh, at the county to see whether or not they're going to do even more.
Yeah, I haven't worked anything.
Yeah. My guess is that maybe they'll do something, um, depending on if they get more money in from recuperation from opioid arrests and confiscations and things like that. I also feel like because they've been so difficult with us trying to get reimbursements through, that not everybody is able to spend all of the money. So it's possible that some of that money will roll over and so we may be able to get another year out of the program. EMS, uh, the good news on EMS is that there is a handshake agreement that they are not going to increase the cost of, um, the EMT coverage that we have. So over the past few years, we just go down the level. Eight twenty four is showing. So over the years, like in twenty twenty three, we had to pay, you know, we pay, they gave us coverage for part of the day. We had twelve hours of coverage and then not coverage, we were able to up that to twenty four hour coverage with an EMT. Um, so our costs, you know, we had gone from zero to two hundred ninety two thousand to four hundred thirty one thousand, plus the fareage expenses. It's staying steady for another year. So twenty twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six, it's been flat.
So twenty four, I'm reading it right. We budgeted, um, five ninety, spent six fifteen, so there was twenty five thousand overage.
That overage though, um, what ends up happening there is that we get money from the EMS, um, foundation.
They donate.
So they will raise money and then what, from what they've raised, they pay for all of the ambulances. Um, so that money they will donate to us periodically. Um, and then we put it into a class account. And when we go buy an ambulance, we already have the money set aside in the ambulance reserve.
So it's not in here?
So it's not in here. The same thing happens with some of the equipment. So they may say like, okay, there's a need for, um, probably in twenty twenty four, part of that overage.
Communications, like I think they paid for radios.
They paid for radios. They also paid for.
That's stretchers.
The stretcher, yes, exactly. Yep, you got it. So that's, if, so if you see an overage there, it may not have actually been an overage because we do try and keep them to their budget and say anything extra, that's when they go to the foundation for.
For the current budget, we've only spent ten percent of what's budgeted so far. It's September.
Uh, yeah, we haven't gotten the bill from Storybook.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's.
We're missing that.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, so four hundred thirty one thousand can easily like be gone in a day.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Do we need to talk to these people?
If my sits in our counter any interest, I'm fine with that. It works for me. Do you want Jack to come in?
Other than thanking for a service now? No, that's fine.
The medical center. Um, one change I did make was the medical director. Dr. Potter was getting a stipend from the town. That came about during COVID when we were bringing him in, um, regularly for consultation on how to deal with, um, the pandemic and some of the changing rules and just to have the medical, um, side of what was going on in the community. We also have the various vaccination pods. Um, and he oversaw all of those as the medical director on site for us. Um, we haven't really had a need for him to like consult with him. I did speak to him and say, you know, especially with his changing role at the medical center here.
Is he living?
Yes, he's, um, he's going over and, what's the word, like more of an educational role at the hospital, like training, you know, resident training and things like that. So I did talk to him. So he's still around, but just not on island with the same regular, regularity that he was.
So he will be able to fulfill this role?
Um, well, I mean, he's still here, but I spoke to him and I said. Yeah, I spoke to him and said, I'm considering, you know, cutting your stipend. What do, what do you think? Like, is there a need, you know? And he was like, no problem, cut it, I'm fine. So. But it's on a future date. If we haven't, you know, hopefully we'll never have another pandemic like we had before. Um, but if we have a, a need to be pulling somebody in on a regular basis, we may want to consider a stipend in the future.
So will he be shutting his office that down?
No, no, it's, um, it's Stony Brook.
So they're taking their whole staff?
Yeah, they, and he's part of their staff. Like we don't have a lease with him, we have a lease with Stony Brook Meeting House Lane, whatever their title is. So they, they're responsible for staffing. He's just getting, within their organization, getting moved into a different role.
Got it.
Yeah. Next one on page eighteen is highway.
That can come in?
We'll just wait. You can't bring them in? Yeah, this one is a small, like, we have, we have so many different areas that these things fall into. Highway here is not the whole highway operation. That's done in the DA fund. Highway here is the management function. So it's him as an elected highway superintendent, half of, um, his assistants and then a little bit of, you know, office, running of the office, so.
So the personnel services, that's payroll?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they, we have one person there, right?
Half, this is, accounts for half a person.
Right, this is half.
Which, when you get the sheet that's unreadable, you'll see how the breakdown is. So, yes. But yeah, anything that has a point one, um, at the tail end of an account.
Got it, okay.
That would be salary costs. Because anytime, you know, any type of sal, you know, like longevity, um, overtime, et cetera. And then point two is always a quip and then point four is like everything else. I can't even remember what point three is reserved for.
What is the longevity again? Could you just give that to me again?
Five years.
Five years.
This is for non-union employees. Um, it is, um, five percent at five years, ten percent at ten years, fifteen percent at fifteen, and then twenty years. And then it doesn't increase after that.
That's, that's for non-union. The civil service but non-union, is that what we?
Just anybody who's not in. Except not electors.
I'm not elected, got it.
Welcome to municipal government.
So much fun. Party never stops.
Yeah, street lighting.
It's been so many hours.
Hi, it's in its own little line there, I had no idea. No, it's, it, it. It's what?
Probably just because the code.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the codes, they.
Or the code.
It's supposed.
Yes, that's what I'd say. So we have to sit into their, their numbering system. Waterways.
What, what street lights do we have? The lights down here.
Bridge Street.
Bridge Street has a.
Maybe at the beaches.
There's a crescent beach. That have random lights, but.
You know, like Crescent Beach, I think, has one.
Northern Berry. Yeah.
Does that have to adhere to the, uh, dark schedule?
I mean, these things are so dull that the. They want to do the, um, lighting of the tree and stuff. They're like, we can't see anybody. It's like pitch black and that, you know, it's so dangerous because none of the streetlights are bright enough. So we've never had a complaint about overly bright streetlights. Really, it's not one that I've heard.
And I think the dark skies compliant law might be attached to buildings.
Yeah, I don't think it applies to us.
To residences and commercial buildings. Um, waterways management. I have a new spreadsheet and, um, and I like will present that at a later date. The biggest thing here is that in the past few years, all of the waterways money that came in was just, was put into the budget. We had lines that we said, this is probably where waterways management is going. The expenditures on these designations always exceeded the revenues for the past few years. And it was just something I did not get a chance to really dig into this, um, last year, so this year I did. So the one thing here is I have taken out, um, like any of the waterways management money going to salaries. Because one of the questions that often get asked is, why are you putting in the Bay Constable salaries here when maybe ten percent of what they do is related to waterways mission? So, but, um, Shelby and I sat down with Bill Garrity and we went through and talked about like, what is the mission of waterways? What are the things that get covered? So like jetties and boat pods. So I've got a spreadsheet which I look at and I'll, I'll be giving it to you all. Where I look at the revenues that come in, look at what are, what I think are valid expenses for waterways money to be used. And then is it a difference? Is it an overage? Because we do have money set aside, which if you think back to the workboat request, but there was money sitting in that reserve fund. Putting in, so this year I'm suggesting that we put in thirty one thousand. For, put it, move money out of the revenue stream of waterways receipts and put it into the reserve fund. So that in a future year, when like the Silver Beach well had like possibly, we're not doing it this year, but when that needs to get replaced, if there's another one that comes up and we haven't accumulated funding for it, um, we have money set aside for those kinds of things. So if there's something that happens at a town landing.
So what we're missing here is revenue piece.
Yes, which we'll get to later. And then I've got a spreadsheet that like, it was the Jerry spreadsheet that we carried over. Um, but now it's been redone to better reflect. And I think it's more in line thinking of what the waterway, the waterways management advisory committee would agree that is, is a better use. And so they had more input than previous.
So just to summarize, um, six tons line is doubling because we're taking thirty one thousand dollars out of the revenue side.
And putting it into, into a reserve account. Yeah, putting it in the bank. Because it's on a future year when some bigger failure happens, we've got money accumulated.
We can hit by a massive hurricane and lose a bunch of bulkheads. That's, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a bulkhead, depending on where they can be, so.
Yeah.
We can't be hit by a hurricane for two more years.
But anyways, I'll, I'll go through that spreadsheet with you. And then town board, other items, what have we got here? Oh, ferry study, um, money for cast, um, that we get from CBBG. The fireworks, five hundred dollars, American Legion, six hundred dollars.
Now, these two here.
I know.
These are donations, right?
I know, I'm wondering about the legality of those, yeah. Cause we got. Yeah.
Like the Historical Society.
Yeah. We'll get Thomas on that. Yeah, we, we slashed the Historical Society, that was a bigger number. These ones kind of got lost in the shuffle. Nutrition program. We've got nutrition kind of all related. We've got the nutrition program, skipping over residential repair. We've got Silver Circle and Senior Center. So that would all be Kelly. Um, do you want Kelly to come in and talk about her programs?
Oh, that's probably good because they are a significant program. And some of the changes here.
That's a yes, right?
Yes.
Um, residential repair is a grant funded program.
So that ends up being washed, right?
So we've got money that comes in that should equal twenty seven four eleven and let's double check that because last year was twenty seven one thirty. Did I make a mistake and not keep it at twenty seven one thirty? Uh, I'll double check that, but it's an in and an out. So there are stipends, um, that go to the coordinators of the program, Judy and Barbara. Um, they field all the calls to come in from, uh, seniors who need help. And you can see we've got Tom Hessegen, Don Dunne, Tom Cronin, and Andrew Chapman who get tasked with installing that light fixture outside that the senior can't reach, stuff like that.
How does that work actually? So that it's just like, how, when the money runs out in October, let's say, how does it, how is that adjustments made?
Um, then we would have, we wouldn't be able to do anything further. We've never run out of money.
Okay.
If you look at the twenty twenty four actual, twenty two thousand was spent in total. And the budget was twenty eight thousand, so.
You only take travel money, it went to a hundred and one dollars instead of two hundred.
I think that was me just trying to. So we'll go, we'll have Kelly come in and talk about that, senior, senior center. The senior shopping assistance program includes twenty two. That is another grant funded program, so the total there equals the total revenues. Again, if you look at the twenty twenty four actual, um, if the adopted was forty one thousand, but we only spent twelve thousand of that. So we're, we've been ramping up and get more people are becoming aware of it and taking advantage of it. But it is a building program.
And what is it? Like, what do they do?
You're a senior, you can't get out, you call, you like, I don't, I think you can like.
Like place an order online or have.
Target or Stop and Shop or something like that.
And the volunteers pick it up.
It's not the volunteer, we have driver, paid drivers.
Yes, that's.
Yeah.
I'm a senior, can I call these people?
You have to be homebound.
I was gonna say, you can get out of the house. Yeah, yeah, you, you have to have a, be incapacitated in some fashion, not be able to do it yourself.
You're barely a senior, babe.
And Meg thinks I'm mentally incapacitated.
I think there have been people who have tried to hop onto that program and, and got. Um, you center, do you want to have Bethany come in and talk about the programs that she runs?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, she's a large budget.
I need to have a conversation with her, but can you do that privately?
Yeah. Community housing board, so this is, this one is where like, just like that, cover page because.
We just, the, sorry, just the backup to recreation. Is the waterman expense in here? Or is that somewhere else?
That's, yeah, that's the cover sheet as well, those grants that we roll over.
Um, but no, you want to know where the.
The expense.
Well, it's under. Yeah, I was gonna say, go back to page twenty two, recreation. So we've got you center and recreating with Bethany.
It's the bottom of page twenty two, the last line of the totals.
No.
Yeah.
You have water in the program.
So we've rolled over seventeen thousand two hundred, so that's what we're, like, that's the max we can spend next year.
Well, we can fund it for two more years, if that right?
Right, yes, yeah.
Good.
Yes.
Your community housing board, I, I think that, I don't know why that would come out of our general fund, why? Because that's really, they have their revenue stream.
Right, in, in.
Seventy something like that.
Prior years, we did not have that. So right now, the only thing, so there's seventy four thousand one hundred is total for community housing board. So it's legal for the site plans, twenty thousand right now. Um, I have that coming out of the community housing fund. But I wanted to have the discussion, do we want to just have the entire?
I think it should come out of that, okay?
Yeah, I agree.
Just collect it.
Yeah, it's it's, it's not, yeah, I don't think the taxpayers have to pay for that.
Yeah, I think if the legislation allows for it, and it should come out of that Community Housing Fund, fund.
Hundred percent.
Just putting, I'm putting.
Is there a question for Thomas?
I don't think so. Well, it's in, it's usually pretty clear, like the way they have CPF. It plays that the money can be used for the rest of the program. I think it's similar for the housing fund, I'm sure they will do the same.
But we'll, we can just.
We'll double check.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure.
Since it's money, the public should get, Thomas, the hell is that, it's okay? And it's a lot of money, $75,000.
Where where's the, I'm looking at lifeguards. What is the cutoff time here?
Give me just a second since I'm just.
So last, well, September 15th is the last day that we man the beaches. I don't know if they have any lifeguards still on the island to man the beaches.
No, we lost most of our lifeguards and actually, I think the lifeguards at Crescent Beach stopped just before Labor Day. But we've kept the one or two lifeguards that we were able to hang on to longer into the season at Wade's Beach because that's a more family oriented beach, and so we wanted to make sure like families, kids.
There are no lifeguards on Labor Day weekend at Crescent?
I think so this year, but we can double check that with Bethany. But she had come in at one point, said, you know, I've got a problem, like I want, I can't man both. Like, is it okay if I do Wade's on, like, do Wade's not Crescent? I agreed with the assessment that.
I'm looking at balance for lifeguards. So what is that cover? It was September, but it's.
Oh, it covers through August 31st, whatever the last payroll was in August.
Why, why did we raise it?
1,000. PGU one.
22.
22.
Page two, okay, so. Let me just find the numbers, so I'm talking numbers here. So where'd you go? Okay, so through August 31st at 28,000 was payroll through whatever the last payroll date was in August. So we will have some August payroll that gets paid in September. So that will bump it up. And then we'll also have some September payroll as well that gets added on there. Bethany is bumping it up above the 54,000 because in order to hang, and she also lost some people during the course of the summer. So she's bumping it up because we need to pay our lifeguards more if we're going to hang on to them. Because there was concern that other entities who have pools and need lifeguards were poaching our lifeguards. Or the kids just like, or like, why am I getting, you know, why am I doing this? I want to like go back to school early or.
Like work at a restaurant and make more.
Or take a break for the last week of the summer, et cetera, so that's why she she needs to.
That's why it's 68 then.
64.
Oh, that was. What the?
Well, the supplies and training is a new line.
Yes, because also if we can pay for their courts that might incentivize more, more young people to go ahead and take the program. You know, get their CPR, get the training. But she can, she'll come in and talk to us about that. So Community Housing Board we talked about, and that's just a double check with Thomas. But if we ever remove the remainder of that, because only 20,000 I have coming out of the Community Housing Fund, that would take our budget down to 1.8%. Which will offset some of that retirement.
Yep.
Phil, we've got Ken coming in. Piping clover and red knot monitoring. We put money in every year because we're supposed to do that. But I think we always either use Highway Guys or we have some volunteers who.
Right.
Who do that for us.
We've considered cutting this line many times.
Yeah, so I finally told the plan. Because I cut it from a thousand dollars in 2024, last year to 250, now I'm coming further. But Ken can talk to the specifics of where that monitoring takes place and how it's been handled.
So what did we spend last year?
Um.
Nothing.
Nothing, yeah. We have not spent any money, I mean, I think maybe 2023 even I spent something. But it was minimal.
What did it go for?
A few years ago?
Yeah.
I think it paid somebody's salary. Someone went, someone on Highway may have come in over the weekend or something.
Yeah, it was $83.39 in 2023.
Yeah, it's it's sad that I don't remember the specifics of $83, so I'm sure.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense at all, probably not, to put it in a hundred bucks just to get, or just we just worry about a contingency when it's a contingency.
So little.
Yeah. 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 Taylor's Island, would you like Pat to come in and talk about Taylor's Island? I think they were flat.
Is it just kind of maintaining it and running it?
Yeah, exactly.
A lot of else going on.
Yeah.
I mean, the usage is up a little bit, which is nice, but we don't need to bring around for that.
Right.
But you guys want to hear from us?
I think we're good, they just keep chugging along. Enhanced mobility for seniors. That was a grant program, and so that is getting funded there. I have a spreadsheet, we had an audit done on this grant, and so had an opportunity to talk to the people, which was a very good conversation that we had. Because what we were doing is we were taking a hundred percent, we were only for people who did the enhanced mobility driving. We were just taking their salaries, not even salaries, just their, the time spent on that. We can take some of the administrative oversight of that program and get reimbursement of that, maybe up to like a 10%. She was checking and there's some emails, I need to go back and double check. Either 10% of a staff person's salary who's coordinating it or up to 10, like 10% of the actual cost. We're also going to be able to build in some of the repairs and gas on the use of those vehicles as well. So it was, it was a good audit, she didn't have any findings where we were deficient in anything, but found out that we can probably tap into more of that money. So, and it's a grant that goes over, is that a three year grant or is that a five year grant?
How much is the grant, sorry?
The overall grant, I think, was like 250 or 265,000, but it's over a certain number of years. And the way we were spending it, it didn't look like we were going to be able to take advan, full advantage of it. And part of the grant is coming from old ARPA money, and I think that might be 100% reimbursable. But if we're pulling in some other things, like the AAA drivers, that can be our match on some of that. So there's a 50% match on another piece of the grant because it's coming from three different agencies at federal level.
January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2027.
What is that grant for? How much?
So whatever the sum is, it's covered by a grant.
Yes, exactly, yes. But I'm also, like, when we get down to revenues, you'll see that the grant reimbursement is, the receipts are more than 20,000. Because we are now able to tap into some other lines.
So the way we do it doesn't affect the 22%.
Correct, right, right, yeah. Because we would just be increasing revenue side.
Amber, can I ask you, Taylor's Island? Cabin and shed repairs? We have a balance of 11,750 that we haven't used. Is that, I mean, and we're appropriating another $12,000.
If they don't use it, it'll just roll into the balance. Yeah, I unfortunately missed the meeting. I think we both missed the meeting this week. Yeah, I, so I don't know exactly where things stand. I have, I have to see the minutes from Jess, she's not prepared. To see what the updates were.
Not recorded.
Right. Yeah. But yeah, if it doesn't get spent, it just rolls into the balance.
There's a capital, what did you, I won't check.
Yes, we have to look at the minutes to see if we have enough data on that. Page 26. That would be the, all the, all the benefits things. So state retirement, police retirement, those two figures will be going up. LoSAP is a good figure. Social Security, if we don't make any changes to staff costs, that number won't change because that's, I actually calculated that figure.
What's this stem for again?
LoSAP.
Yeah.
So great question.
Here, yes, for the ambulance. Firemen have their own LoSAP, but that's a different.
The EMS volunteers, like longevity.
Yes, longevity, yeah.
Service award.
Thank you.
So on point here.
It's just LoSAP now.
In my head, I was like, it's a length of something.
Okay, yeah, no, it's just LoSAP now, so I don't, like, don't even go back yet, okay?
The service, what's the AP?
Award program.
So that estimate I was able to receive before preparing this. Workers' comp, that number will get revisited now that we have some information from the insurance company. Unemployment insurance, that is, we just put 5,000 in there. The municipalities do not participate in New York State unemployment. So when someone goes out on unemployment and they claim it, if they leave here, we actually just do a direct payout, you know, based on the calculations. So New York State will go ahead and do the calculation for us, but then we have to reimburse the state for whatever the payout is. But we have historically not had very many people. Part of that is because we're civil service, and so it's harder, people have protection, so we don't fire like people do in the private sector. Disability, that number could get adjusted a little bit, paid family leave, I think that's probably pretty close. Medical insurance.
It's a nice round number.
Yeah, I just, yeah, that was, that was my guesstimate.
Yeah.
And it was just based upon, you know, like I think I put in like 7% or whatever the like last year's increase was. So again, we now have something, I think, from the insurance company.
That looks kind of on trend.
$2 billion.
Yeah. Like if you look at the increase over the years.
Health insurance stipends is a calculated number. Medicare reimbursements is, anybody who's left, they do get their Medicare, the part that they pay reimbursed. So that number would only change if they had people return.
You know, our healthcare is through New York State NYMA.
NYSH.
NYSH.
Yeah. Capital projects, the only thing that is in there is based on, oh, do we have the sheet on that, Shelby?
Yeah, that's in the back.
In the back, okay. That is for police radios.
85 is the.
Yeah.
Capital's for chief.
What do we do about cameras, you know, the body cam? I know there was, there was a discussion about it last year.
We didn't put anything in, that is something that's going to have to be negotiated with the union contract. Because most police departments, if they start to wear body cam, there's an extra, like, there's extra work on everybody's part in how that data gets collected and trained, yeah, so there's a whole, so. Other police departments have negotiated a stipend with increases what the police officers get paid for and have extra.
There's also grants available, that has to get pulled within time?
I'm not sure about the grants, I haven't, haven't heard of any.
Yeah.
Okay.
But when Chief comes in, you can ask him about his thoughts on that.
So when talking about this capital, you know, our capital projects fund, we don't have any money that we're carrying over year to year to build a fund to help pay for capital projects. Is that something we want to consider doing?
It is always something that we want to consider doing.
Because I think that would be a smart move so that when larger projects come up, we have something to pull. My mind, I'm like, if we're going to be able to take the 70,000 out of community housing and put that into the housing, then maybe we should put 70 or 50 into capital improvement to start creating a fund.
Oh, wow.
So if we're taking the 70,000 from the Community Housing Fund and taking it out of taxpayer dollars and putting it into the housing fund dollars, right? So then that would bring us down to what, 1.8 is what we were saying? Instead, maybe take 50,000 then and put 50,000 into the capital improvement plan to start building a fund. And that would still bring us less than the 2.2, as mentioned. But at least then we're building a fund that we didn't previously have. So that's just my, my.
Where's the, where are you taking the 50,000 from?
So what I'm doing is offsetting the monies that are going to be going into, so the Community Housing Fund, right?
Right.
Right now, that's coming out of taxpayer money. We're going to see if we can instead pay for the Community Housing Fund out of that CPF, out of their own fund, right? So that's coming out.
Right.
So instead, what I'm saying is then take 50,000 and put it into the capital planning fund so we can start building a fund. And so that's offset.
Where are you taking the 50,000 from?
Community housing.
No, well, well, essentially, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, there's savings there.
Right, we have a savings from the Community Housing Fund if we can take that out of the housing fund money, right? So it's coming out of the tax fund, so I'm saying put 50,000 into capital planning. And we're still doing better than we were before.
Except I've got 50,000 rolling on from retirement.
I think when we got it.
They tried.
I know.
I didn't go for the full 70.
Isn't that disingenuous though? That 50, isn't that disingenuous, the 50,000? They get it out of community housing.
No, I'm not taking it out of community housing at all.
She's just saying, since we have a budget savings.
Because we're going to have a budget savings. I'm not taking it out of anything, I'm just seeing how the numbers are going to balance.
And what will, will be used for land acquisition management?
No, no, it's for the capital projects.
What they're saying, what they're saying is that community housing will pay for, pay its own fees, okay? So it's no longer coming out of the general fund.
Right.
Taxpayer.
I get, I get that, it's just.
What she's saying is, since we saved over here, we can allocate some money for the, for the thing into the.
It's kind of moving money from something that.
I'm not, I'm not saying to take money from housing at all. I'm just saying that we have the opportunity to add like 50,000 back in to start building a capital planning fund. So we don't.
When we were talking about the boat, where was that excess money when they were talking about the $200,000 boat?
Waterways.
Waterways, so they had, they have funds in waterways right now?
Yes, yes.
And there, and is, okay, we'll get to that, I guess, right?
Yes, got a spreadsheet.
That's going to be your protocol, and got a spreadsheet, got a spreadsheet for that.
If you're in the paper or what you're.
Got a spreadsheet. Got a spreadsheet for that.
So capital projects, just, so the only thing in there right now, last year we took it down to zero. We had nothing that we were doing capital projects on. So this 50,000 is, is a new addition, it is a ramp up, just so you know, yeah.
And it's ready and it's for the police.
Yes, right.
But then there's also a whole bunch of other things in there that they keep bringing up, that they keep doing down the line.
Yes.
We have no funds for them, so it would be nice to build a fund, like we do with Highway for their equipment fund.
Yeah.
Do something similar.
And if you do look briefly at page 55, just since we're on capital. Right, you'll see, so the 50,000 for the upgrade to the radios, there's the financing there, it says A. So that's coming from appropriations, which when it's, it's designated A, that means it's coming from taxpayer revenues in that, yeah, taxpayer of dollars that year. If you look down to the hook lift truck, 61,802, that's actually coming out of the reserve account. So there is an equipment reserve account that the Highway Superintendent schedules out the different ways. So we can also. So we can also have him go through the history of that because he did want to make a request for the walking floor trailer. And so we can go back to looking at how that, how that fund works.
Right.
Which will also give us insight into, like, why we want to build a capital fund.
Right.
Well, it totally makes sense when you deal with a department that has really large expenditures.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Equipment, like the, the recycling center.
And we should probably have like a, oh, yeah, never mind. A whole different thought, never mind.
Next page, which is twenty-seven, we start to get into revenues. So to go over this briefly, and I think what we'll do today is we go through the A Fund revenues. Let's see. Well, we'll see how far we get. It's three oh, three oh nine. The LIFO pilot payment, that is, they just, whatever the tax gap is, it's a two percent increase each year. Although sometimes it does seem that slightly different, but I put two percent increase there. On anything that has interest, let's see, the real property tax interest. And then there's also interest in the next section on the trust and agency checking account, the class accounts, the EMS training, things like that. In doing some research on interest rates, we've been in, we've had a couple of years where interest rates have gone up. Like, year, number of years ago, like, we were getting nothing on interest. So interest rates did go up. The projections for twenty twenty-five, and I can get into more detail, but off the top of my head, the anticipated interest rates going from twenty-five into twenty-six are estimated to be about seventy-five percent of what they have in this year. So anywhere that I had interest, I extrapolated through the end of the year based upon what happened, was happening from twenty-four to twenty-five and then going forward to twenty-six. So pretty much, it'll be whatever I extrapolated for the end of twenty twenty-five and then seventy-five percent of that. So if you want to do some research on where you think interest rates go. I'm one.
Not down.
Not down? Well, no, they are anticipated to go down a little bit.
I think they're going to go down a lot, but that's okay.
I checked like three different sources, Morningstar and a couple other. When I get to that page, as we go page by page, I can tell you where I pulled my assumptions from.
Okay.
Franchise fees on cable vision.
Oh, earnings interest.
I'm telling that?
No.
Oh, yeah, earning, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we're earning.
That's going to go down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Franchise fees on cable vision, that just seems to go down a little bit each year. Although I guess, actually, so we'll have to double check when we come back to this line by line, why our modified budget was up a little bit for cable vision. Because I, what we're finding.
That grant.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And what we're finding with cable vision is more and more people are disconnecting from cable and just going with streaming services.
It's so expensive.
Yes, like, I know. I don't have cable anymore, so we're seeing that go down each year, but best guess is there. The rest of these revenues.
Put a penny lease.
That's for the landing, right?
Yes. Yeah.
It's all zero.
It's a dollar.
Bless you.
Twenty dollars. So it's for the landing, where to turn in the road?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The fourteen dollars is, I think, somebody realized that we hadn't built them for a few years. We had a whopping fourteen dollars.
Maybe fourteen years.
Back in twenty twenty-four.
Penalty, it's fourteen dollars.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, there's other, like, there's revenue items in here where you'll see zeros just because they're, you know, insurance recovery. Like, we don't want to have any insurance recoveries because that means somebody got to an accident.
Right.
And when they, they come in, we up the expenditure side. So the things that are in there is the state aid, the AIM payment, which has been flat over the past few years. And you also see the opioid grant is in there. The mortgage tax, I talked about that when we started this session today. So there are the lines there. We, in twenty twenty-four, had three hundred twenty-two thousand. So I think we're hopefully back on track to like a stable level there. But that is truly a crapshoot each year. On the next page, page twenty-eight, the Suffolk County Community Development Lot Grant Reimbursement. We are, we have, we're going to have the, we set the public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing September twenty-ninth to get community input on that. I've only put thirty-five thousand of the grant in there because not knowing what we're going to be going out for, I just put in a couple of whatever the expenditure lines were. So there was like five thousand for a cash payment someplace and then thirty thousand was for the survey for the community housing. So actually, not, we're not trans, we're not taking out, that thirty thousand, thirty thousand has to stay.
Stay.
Stay in the community housing grant, now that I'm looking at this.
Coming out of the grant?
Yes, so the seventy-four thousand, twenty thousand was actually coming from the community housing fund for the site plan review, legal costs, thirty thousand for the survey. So we're only going to be transferring about twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
And we're just going back to this one page on the mortgage tax again, okay? We have, we, we're looking for one seventy-eight, that's what our budget was.
Yes.
And, and through, through eight, eight thirty-one, we have a hundred thousand. But you, you now have a tentative budget of three sixty.
Yes, that hundred and one thousand is the first quarter only. There's a, there's a huge lag of when we received those funds. And I actually thought through August thirty-first.
That's for one quarter.
That's one quarter. And so I thought that we would have the second quarter. So hopefully in September, we'll at least have half a year.
Okay.
So that's.
They're behind usually.
Yeah, I can see this in, I can see your twenty-four, is that three hundred and fifteen, okay?
Town clerk revenues.
I'm shooting films at the trouble.
No, we didn't have them this past year.
It's not that we knew about.
Yeah, the parking permits went up though, so that's good. Around a hundred and one thousand, three eighty-five. And the beach driving went up to seven twenty-five.
So did we say we're going to have you go through your section line? Yeah, you'll be here.
I'm doing it while I was here.
So let's go through those details because then you can bring in those numbers because, yeah, I like that hundred and one thousand.
And outdoor assembly went up to a thousand.
So we can make some modifications maybe to parking permits.
And just looking at this, the dredging and dock permits, you have eight thousand. You have to remember, we upped the fee, so twelve hundred dollars just for the application. They get approved, it's three thousand seven hundred something. So you have two dock applications, you'll have over eight thousand.
Okay. All right, if you want to do a lottery, if I make a case for increasing that.
This coming Tuesday, we're, I'm looking at where alarm system penalty, we're going over that Tuesday.
Yes, yeah, the fire commissioners are coming in because they would like to talk about doubling the fees.
How's that collect, the town clerk collects that?
So we had to implement another system to collect fees because no one is paying.
We have to start to action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just want to pay their bill.
Forgetting them.
Twenty twenty-four budget, this is the mooring fees. Eighty-five, you had them collected, hundred and fifteen. Did we up the rate?
Yes.
That year?
Yeah, there was an increase of what the rate was for mooring fees. We also went from a three-year to a one-year. So, but we didn't change it for people who were like in year one of year three. So as the years have rolled by, I think twenty twenty-six in March is when we will get.
Everyone will be on the same yearly revenue.
Or, you know, whoever, there's, there's a few people who will still finish up twenty twenty-six on the old fee system. So we'll see the final jump up in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
And those are all in sort of gray because when I show you the spreadsheet that talks about waterways, it's like those are the revenues. So revenue, mooring fees, boat storage fees, and the Dering Harbor waitlist.
We charge people.
What do you mean, Dering Harbor waitlist? A few.
Give me how many boats or?
That's an Amber question.
In here.
What is the Dering Harbor waitlist?
So Dering Harbor, there's a gridded area, just like in Silver Beach, WA, WB, Dering Harbor, that's the gridded areas.
Okay.
Those are full. So when someone wants to get on the waiting list, in case someone relinquishes their mooring, it goes to the next person. So currently, yes, there is a charge, twenty-five dollars or twenty-seven on online mooring.
How many do we have in that area?
I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I know that there's twelve people on the waiting list.
No, I'm not giving you my.
I can look it up really quick and come back to you.
Yeah, it's been good.
It's so good.
On page twenty-nine, the EMS revenues, ambulance donations. You can see in twenty twenty-four, we had a hundred and fifty-seven, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, basically. But we don't budget anything for that and generally that will go into the reserve fund unless it's for communication, you know, acquisition of equipment that we're doing.
There's, I assume somewhere in here is a list of reserve funds.
It's not in here, but we can go through those, yeah.
Okay.
And actually, they are on early, first pages of the monthly report that tells you things. So if you want to see all of the checking accounts, class accounts, reserve, savings accounts, yeah.
Good question.
Dock permits and judging go in the waterways as well.
Um, that's like a clarify, please, too.
Shouldn't dock permits and what else?
Go into waterways.
Dog?
A dog, yeah.
Those historically have it because there's a cost associated with those.
Capes.
Yeah, yeah, because there's a special review process. Whereas the mooring fees.
Now, you've implemented the new.
Can we go, can we go back to page twenty-nine, beyond twenty-nine?
Yes.
We go back to twenty-nine. Account number eight two six one zero, we talked about it. And should we get, should we raise that tentative to encourage?
Well, we don't get, I mean, years ago, we used to get bail money and so that went away. So unless they reinstitute stricter bail.
Right, or whatever.
All right.
Okay.
And then some of that, like, most of this, I think, there are, you know, like, parking fines and things like that. It sort of comes over from the court. Some of it comes in and some of it goes out.
Because to a degree of eight percent.
Some of it goes out, so we don't, we don't see all of that. Landfill revenues, we're going to let.
We'll deal with that.
Yeah, we'll let Ken do that.
Yeah. And I'd already highlighted in the brush in, so we'll see what he has to say about that. Maybe on the bats. Yeah, now we'll not forget that.
A long year, Beth.
Yeah, medical center revenue, that's, you've got the lease there and then it's just electricity and fuel reimbursements. Nutrition revenue. That thirteen thousand is a grant. And so is the fifty-seven thousand five hundred.
I mean, where would you find the walk-in revenue? Like, if you walked into Monday or Friday at lunch, you'd have to pay.
That's the thirteen.
Oh, that's the thirteen, oh, okay. That's not the grant, the grant is further down, okay.
The grant's the fifty-seven.
Yeah, because everybody who has lunch pays for it.
Residential repair revenue, that's.
It's a wash.
Yeah, that's a wash. We'll get to, again, you know, I think a little bit of the materials reimbursement, we build that into the expenses.
It's a grant, covers that, right?
Yeah, yeah, that is the grant and so done the expenditures.
Should we make those notations now?
We what?
Should we make those notations? I'll just write it down.
Yes, yes. Yes, page, yeah, thirty-two. So if you look at the A thirty-eight oh one under its FTA, Federal Transportation, two-three-ten mobility grant, that, you'll see that I took up, it was eighteen thousand last year. And so it was like eighteen thousand just for the mobility grants drivers. But in looking at what other things we can recuperate with AAA and our other program drivers, I've taken this revenue item up to forty-five thousand.
Okay, what, wait, what was that?
We were only applying for reimbursement of eighteen thousand last year, up to eighteen thousand last year because we were anticipating drivers costing us eighteen thousand. We've now increased it because she said, don't go for a direct reimbursement program. Look at your total transportation costs for seniors. So we have the count, the line below, ten thousand AAA, and then the forty-five thousand should cover all of our driver programs as well as a small administrative piece as well, and some fuel and some.
Before this, what happened to the other twenty-five grand we stated?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're able to recoup some administrative costs that we previously couldn't. If we don't, we haven't spent like eighteen thousand dollars worth of drivers this year, so we won't get eighteen thousand dollars worth of revenue. So it's not like we've lost, it's, we've lost a little bit because we didn't know we could apply for it. So, so we can bill up to forty-five thousand dollars if we spend up to forty-five thousand dollars.
Gotcha. And what happens to the social channel?
Kelly can talk about it when she goes in. It's a group that comes in on Wednesdays. There's a meal involved, there's like a.
Just as a side note, when you go home and are perusing your budget book, we do have some department narratives at the end, so Kelly will do a narrative, so she outlines all of these programs back.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Not.
More reading, yes.
More reading.
Suffolk County Shopping Assistance Program, we put forty thousand dollars in for receipts, forty thousand in for expenditure, so it's a wash. And as you can see, you know, it's still taking time to get off the ground and there's a little bit of a delay in reimbursement, so we've only received in two thousand so far this year. But we have more reimbursements out there. And we've got the various police revenues, she can speak to those when he comes in. And then recreation revenues, Stephanie can speak to those when she comes in.
Just a quick question, the police revenue is the, the first one, what is? Police.
That is revenue sharing that comes in from the county, I believe. And so they've held it flat for the past couple of years, which every year there is talk of it getting cut, but fortunately, they've been keeping it steady. And so it covers overtime, you know, like, there's a whole bunch of things and we put in for to say like, yes, we've spent this much for police and therefore they, they pay us.
A reimbursement?
Well, kind of, it's a revenue source to help cover the police department.
They help you.
Yes.
Basically, kind of like a grant.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Recreation revenue.
That's going to be.
That's going to be. Taylor's Island, we don't put in, we haven't gotten any state aid in a while. When we did the bulkhead repair years ago, it's the same rule of output, it was a big thing, but we'll get rid of it until something happens with it again. Then the rest of these pages on the A Fund just give you like the totals by the different departments. So if you want just an overview of.
And this is revenue.
Well, the first part is expenditures and then the second part is revenues. You'll see it if we turn the page thirty-four.
Okay.
Oh, no, it does have EMS in it, that's fine.
Do you have the, you have a spreadsheet on, like, let's just say, recreation revenues versus cost? All the expenses that go into it?
Well, if you take the one section and the other section, they're in. Well, if you take the one section and the other section there, and Bethany has it as well.
She has, but she's coming in anyhow.
Exactly, yeah. However, I haven't worked, I haven't done the special spreadsheet on it because it's all here. What'd you say?
I have everyone scheduled, so I'll send it on.
And then if we turn the page, we get to the B fund. A fund is always, takes the longest because it's got the most going on. But I think because it's three-thirty, like rather than starting to dive into, like we just spent hours on the A fund. When we get together.
So much.
Next Wednesday, yes, exactly. But.
Well, what I'm trying to understand, just we, we went through this, that's great, we got the things. But what I'm trying to understand, when I look at the, uh, the fund balances that we've been using. Okay. I went back to twenty-three, okay? We have been using fund balances probably for the last three years.
I think even further back.
Yeah, I'd say more.
Say we, 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 you've allocated fund balances, okay? Tell me about it. I mean, like we're, we're, basically, we're using fund balance to balance our budget.
So. So what happens is fund balance gets created because we either have more revenues that come in against budget in a given year or we have fewer expenditures that happen? So it creates fund balance because, um, we've, we've already assessed the taxpayers, but then we've got more offsets or we've got less expenditures. So then that goes into fund balance.
Like last year with the, with the fund balance, I think it was a negative number here. Like we really are taking out of whatever's in the fund balance here. I, you see if I have, I was just looking at them, I couldn't figure out, like, I mean, if we win at this level of four hundred and fifteen thousand, we, how, how many years would we get before our fund balance wouldn't be there? I mean, you know, I'm, I'm just.
Hard to say, I mean, if you, if no other additional monies were coming in, you have to look at it from year to year because in some years, there may be a year where we have more expenditures and so over and above and so we have to eat, you know, we don't generate fund balance, we actually eat into fund balance. That hasn't been the case for the past few years. This tight of a budget this year could cause that to be the case, that we might have, like, people will, like, not have any.
Like, like we have the cell tower, that was an asset that the town owned. Right, so we're really using that to fund up, is that correct?
Sixty-seven thousand dollars.
And that's been going a lot.
We have a spreadsheet, but like this is a better conversation for when I, um, update that spreadsheet and bring it in.
Okay.
Because there's, there's multiple columns, there's like, the, the auditors and the audit report will have like what our fund balance is, but then there are pockets of how, um, things that are outside of what we have.
I guess what I was thinking about, like with the cell tower, it's, it's an asset of ours, we sell off an asset. So maybe that sixty-seven thousand should go into a capital funding, cause it goes back into your, you're, you're back into the capital funds.
And some of it did. And because the money that we used to get in on the cell tower revenues, half of it historically was budgeted for operations to offset, so it was coming in as a revenue item, a revenue line. The other half, sixty-seven thousand approximately, was going into capital expenditures. And so it was billed, you know, it, we could use it for some sort of purchase. From that cell tower money, there, there's a certain number of years left.
We gotta get further into this discussion because when I looked at this, okay, it, it, it looked like, okay, like, um, like in year twenty-four, okay, we, we're, we really are, um, we're decreasing our, our fund balance on a year-to-year basis. But I think if you wanna bring it forward, I'd like you to discuss it.
Yeah, it gets generated, but we also generate fund balance.
Yes, I, well, you can generate it if you're not putting into it because you're taking away from it. When you're taking away from it, you're not adding anything into it, for the most part.
But if you have revenues in excess of budget in a given year, then you've just created something to put into fund balance. And then if you have expenditures that you don't spend everything in a given year, then you've got extra money that stays in fund balance, cause it doesn't, it hadn't, didn't get used.
But if you, if you, if your fund balance goes down, it means that you're, you need that money to balance your budget. Okay, so I guess what I'm saying to you, okay, is that our, our fund balances appear to be decreasing, okay?
And what, where, what are you looking at?
I was looking at this, um, this was, this was, I don't know where they got this from, this came out of, uh, I think one of the audits from twenty-four, where they showed a negative fund balance, okay? So it is decreasing in that twenty-four, I'll, I'll send this over, I'll, I'll just, I'll bring it more.
Okay, yeah.
Topic with you, okay, because I think it's really something.
You can see the number, cause there's so much, especially in the audited financial statements, there is so much that goes into, um, fund balance at the audit level, so if you're looking at the audited financial statements, um, you've got, um, other post-retirement employee benefits that flow into there, and so if you have a change in the actuarial assumptions.
See, we never, it wasn't, when I, when I went into the history of the budgets, okay, some of them, some, we had years before where we never took any money out of our fund balance, okay? And I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at the fund balances, like it, it appears to be decreasing, feels we're taking from it.
Yeah, I'd like to see the numbers, because the numbers that I'm thinking of that where I've seen decreases had to do with actuarial assumptions that changed because of, um, other post-retirement benefits. So the stock market has a bad year and then all of a sudden, are the value, you know?
Interest goes down or?
Yeah, so I mean, there's so many factors.
I get that.
So if you're looking at that number, there's also restrictions on different fund balances, so you also have to look at unrestricted fund balance. So there's many different.
This is, this is unrestricted fund balance, they're talking about.
Okay, if you would show it to me, so that way I can.
Okay, I'll bring it up in the.
If I'm adjusting, yeah, yeah.
Providing a, yeah, I would send you a look at it and have an A B S R.
Yeah.
But the only thing is really when you have an asset, what I'm struggling with is an asset, when you have an asset like the cell tower that we got two million dollars for, I don't know whether it should be used to pay the budget down. It really seems to me it would be better used to be put into a grant program to buy other assets that the town needed for the grant program.
Which is what happened at the time, half of it, almost half of it was spent on capital projects or setting aside funding for future capital, for future grants that were reimbursable, so that we had money. But then there's also the piece that we did say, okay, we're gonna let this go towards operating. There were people in the community at that point in time who said, you just got one point one million dollars. I'd like to see you take that all against this year's budget, whatever year that was, two thousand eight, nineteen, two thousand twenty, who said, if you've got money, why are you gonna build up a, a big fund balance of one point one million dollars? Like, give it back to us now, let us reap the benefit of that. And a question that always comes.
And you paid down debt, I think you paid down some.
Yeah, we did pay down some debt, yeah.
The sixty, that's sixty, what is it?
Sixty-seven thousand.
Seven, four thousand dollars, okay? It just appears, okay, that if it's an asset that we are selling out, it, it shouldn't be going towards paying the budget down and making the budget work, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, but at the time, that sixth, the first year sixty-seven thousand came into play, that was probably like three-quarters of a percent on budget increase, so if we hadn't used that sixty-seven thousand dollars in that very first year, then the taxpayers would have then had to pay because that revenue source.
Well, yeah, if you don't have it, you, you know, what, 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 what I'm saying is that basically, you know, you, you really, you only have, if you, you, you only have a couple of options, you either, you either, um, increase your taxes or you control your expenses, okay? But I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking about an asset, you know, when you have a town asset that you sell off, okay? And you're using part of it to pay your budget down, I don't know whether that's such a good practice, but I'll, I'll, I'll put it down for the next time we meet, okay?
Yeah, but what I was trying to say is that first year, if we had not used it to offset some of the, the sixty-seven thousand, to offset the, the revenue that just disappeared, then the budget would have had to increase in that year, I think, it was like three-quarters of a percent. So the tax rate would have had to gone up that extra three-quarters of a percent. You would have also had people in the community saying, why are you taking that one point one million dollars? You're raising my taxes and you're sitting on money, um, that, so there's.
The money you're sitting on is really for, um, for, you're built, you need some, some money in your, in your, in case of emergency, bad marketplaces for emergencies, okay? But if we keep taking from it, I'm just saying to you that we're really working that down.
I monitor that, that's why I have a spreadsheet. So I do, that's why I have a spreadsheet, I monitor it because I don't ever want to pull out more than I think that the town can afford and put us in a, a place of jeopardy a fun year. The school district, they are legally required to not have more than a four percent fund balance. Every time I've ever gone to a class, talked to the Office of State Comptroller, there is no mandate for towns to maintain a certain, um, fund balance level. They won't even give you advice on what is a good fund balance level. So towns across the state are just flying by the seat of their pants on what is a good fund balance.
But they do recommend that we don't increase taxes more than two percent?
Well, yeah, the man.
If you use the fund balance, you have to increase your taxes, that's what you have to do.
Right, yeah.
But what do we take this year for about six hundred thousand?
Well, about four hundred and five thousand dollars, which is, would be coming from where we ended twenty twenty-four. And then the other fund balance, um, add-ins there are things that we know we're not going to spend in twenty twenty-five. So if we, if we couldn't roll over, it would have just, yeah, it would have rolled over into fund balance if we're not spending it this year. We know we're not spending it, but since we know, excuse me, we know that some of these projects, like the Waterman program, like we, we wanna make sure we track that money independently. Um, jetties and bulkheads, we didn't do, um, the project that we were going to do last year. It's gonna be a more expensive project, so we're accumulating the money and rolling it over. So we're specifically identifying like this would roll into fund balance, therefore I'm taking it out specifically for this project. So four oh five is to just sort of.
Or in fund balance.
Well, it isn't yet because the year hasn't closed. So we're pulling from twenty twenty-five fund balance that could be created. The four oh five is pulling from already established in fund balance.
Yeah, no, that's.
And we're doing that in order to level the taxpayers, what they pay, and so that there's not.
So if we wouldn't take the existing mature fund balance of four oh five, instead of two point two, it would be seven percent.
Yeah, and I have, I presented just to, to show what percent of.
No, I, I get that, I can, I'm just saying, the last number of years, we've been using fund balance to balance our budgets. Okay, and it, and that's all, that's the only comment I wanna make.
Yeah, no, and, and last year, even when we pulled, not even last year, the year before, I think when there was a fund balance pull and maybe even use of Arco money, I was like, just be, just know that this could impact next year. So us going from five point four percent to two point two percent by utilizing fund balance, the caution is that next year, if we, for some reason, we have some disaster and we have to use our fund balance on something or we don't hit receipts or revenue targets, or people overspend for some reason, which is not a likely piece, it's gonna be, revenues don't materialize, then, um, we will have a four percent increase in the budget because, or three point two percent increase in the budget.
If you're, if you're struggling at this particular time with high interest rates and all of a sudden this thing takes the dip, you're gonna be lost, you're gonna be, you'll have a loss of revenue.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
And that's what the fund balance is for, to make up for those kinds of.
Yes.
Those kinds of situations, okay? But here we have high, high interest rates, okay, and, uh, we have high, um, mortgage.
Mortgage checks.
Taxes, okay, so, I mean, we're, and you are still going into the fund balance.
Yes, yeah.
And that's what I'm trying to say, okay?
We may get to the end and you may say, I don't want four hundred and five thousand dollars pulled out, we're gonna go with a five point four percent tax increase.
It's almost like the community housing, you, I think, you, what did you say, if it's one, if it's a, it would be one, uh, what is it? One percent for every hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so really has an impact on the budget, just by making that one little move over taking it out of the general fund and letting community housing pay for it out of its revenue stream.
Yes, although it was, it's not that big of a thing because we were actually taking out twenty thousand from the community housing fund and then what was the other piece?
CBG.
Oh, yeah, it was a grant money, yeah. So we're not gonna see that, um, that four, point four percent decrease, it's gonna be like a two point, a point two percent decrease.
Okay, all right, we'll like get into the rest of it, okay?
Yes, so our next meeting is going to be on Wednesday, the seventeenth. It's a short, uh, well, we're from ten to twelve, so hopefully we can, in that two-hour period, at least get through the B fund and maybe D A D B, cause they're short two, and then, um, from one to four on the seventeenth for our afternoon session where then we can start to go line by line. Or if we have sign-ups for specific departments, we'll go to those first. So if you're scheduling people, I wouldn't wanna see them be, um, until the afternoon of the seventeenth.
Good, because Bethany's from one to two.
Perfect, okay. All right, thank you, everybody. You guys are true first. We never have public sitting here.